Well, welcome. Thank you for coming to tonight's Grand Rapids Public Schools Board Meeting. I'm gonna have a pleasure of allegiance if you please join me. Stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
Please.
To the flag of the United States of America, it's true that for which stands one nation under cloud, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Miss Grant, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Reverend Matthias?
Present.
Ms. Shaki?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Baker is excused. Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Grant, present. Ms. Lewis?
Here.
President Ross?
Oh, also, I apologize. I forgot to mention if anyone wants to offer public comment, there are comment cards at entryways, and if you complete one of those, our board assistant will pick that up and call you down at the appropriate time. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please?
It's moved. Second.
I guess we'll start our night with, oh. Yeah, all in favor of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Alright, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Grant. Start with our celebrations, please.
So, good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. And tonight, this is an example of using your mind well. We have one of our scholars, Mr. Vishnu Mano, who is a student at City High Middle School, and he was a recent award winner of the Stark Garden Five by Five Night. He has an app that he's going to come share about what it is. I have Executive Director Mr. Rodney Lewis, as well as his principal, Mr. Ryan Hubert, who will come. And then also, I want to give acknowledgement to his family. His mom, Bindia, is here in the audience. And when I say this is a young man to watch, and when you look up awesomeness, this would be this young man. So if I can invite all of them forward to kind of share what his creation has been.
So, good evening, everyone. Dr. Roby did a wonderful job in introducing Vishnu. He is an awesome young man. He's 11th grade student at City High Middle, and he had a great idea for entrepreneurship opportunity, which afforded him an opportunity to do a five-minute pitch to Stark Garden Five by Five Night, and he was able to secure $5,000 in the process of setting forth his thought process and his idea. So I'm gonna let Mr. Hubbard share some thoughts about Vishnu, and then we will allow Mr. Mano to share his thoughts about how he came to light up his idea.
Good evening, President Ross, Superintendent Roby, and esteemed board. It's my honor to be here and helping to introduce Vishnu. He, it's not often that we have a student that has, I mean, an amazing idea as this, that actually meets a need, but then on top of it, to have the character and the intelligence and the grit to see through realizing this idea really from start to finish. Not only is the idea his, but as he'll say or speak to, the technology, the code, from 3D printing to writing code, to seeking out the city and these businesses to make it happen, has all been his initiative. And really, all started with the idea, but to see that come to fruition through a school project is just, well, it's the reason we do this, right? And so it's so exciting for me to introduce Vishnu and just let him know we're super proud of all the work he's doing.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me here. This is truly an amazing opportunity. I can't really express in words how thankful I am to be here. So I just wanted to quickly share with you, I guess, the story of how my app came to be. In sophomore year at City High Middle, we have a project called The Personal Project. It's through the NYPD Program, which is the Middle Years Program. It's part of the international baccalaureate curriculum that City follows. So for my 10th-grade personal project, I tried to find a problem I saw in the community and try to come up with a solution using technology, which has been my passion for a couple of years now, to try and solve this problem. So I just wanted to start off by saying I'm a huge Grand Rapids Griffins fan, and that's where my app really came to be. We missed the opening, like, face-off of one of our, like, one of the games I was looking forward to watching because we couldn't find an open parking spot. And this was in elementary school. But, you know, as an elementary schooler with, you know, the attention span, you know, very small attention span, I quickly forgot about the problem I experienced. However, in 10th grade, I kind of remembered this is a problem I'd faced before, and the solution shouldn't be that hard to implement. I didn't know exactly what the solution would look like. I just knew that I kind of wanted to make an app that would help drivers quickly find an open parking spot, especially on those busy nights in downtown Grand Rapids. So for The Personal Project, I built this, you know, ragtag prototype on an iPhone box, put together with rubber bands and duct tape. So it was truly, you know, a crude prototype, but it worked. So by the end, by March of 2021, I had a solution that could detect whether a parking spot was open or taken, and update that data in real time to an app. And at this point, The Personal Project ended. I wrote a report on it and sent it over to the IB to get it graded, and I thought that's where my project ended. But I guess as a conclusion to my project and kind of see if my solution was feasible to be implemented in Grand Rapids, I pitched my idea to Mobile GR, which is the City of Grand Rapids' parking department. And I wasn't really expecting much. I was just expecting some feedback on my idea, maybe some brainstorming session to come up with a better solution. But surprisingly, they offered me an internship, which is where this project kind of took off. So that summer, I interned with the City of Grand Rapids, trying to make my solution more like, you know, focused solution instead of just a prototype. So then we came up with this wooden prototype that was attached to 12 or 13 parking spots in the Ottawa Fulton Parking Ramp, which is just across from Van Andel Arena, where this whole process started for me, missing my hockey game. So that brought it full circle. And then after the internship, I still, you know, stayed in touch with my supervisors, still tested my spots at the ramp, and came up finally with this solution. So we, my initial solution was around $50 per parking spot. I'll explain really quickly how it works. But we brought this cost down to just under $2 per parking spot to make it affordable for parking ramps to implement. So all a parking ramp would have to do is attach one of these sensors to every parking spot in a parking ramp, and in real time, this sensor basically updates information to our app whether the parking spot is open or taken. So since this is affordable for parking ramps to implement, it would just be another utility that would help them attract more customers and help their drivers save time while parking. All it does is it detects whether the spot is open or taken and just updates that information over to the app. And so that's basically how it works. I'm in the process of testing it at both the City of Grand Rapids and a couple other parking ramps across Grand Rapids. But hopefully, if this gets implemented, it could have a massive impact on our environment, our emissions, and the time it takes for drivers to find parking in Grand Rapids. And really quickly, before I go, I'd just like to give a quick shout-out to all the people at City who helped me bring this project to life. You know, Mr. Hubbard, Ms. Vanderly, and Mr. Antima were three people who helped me and supported me throughout the project, from like the initial personal project all the way to what it is today. So I just wanted to thank them, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Amazing. Amazing, for sure. Any questions for Mr. Mano?
I'll just have a quick comment. So I was one of the judges the night that you made your presentation. And so when we kind of went into the war room to go over everyone's presentation, one thing that really just stood out is the innovation that you have. And everyone in that room, we were all business owners. And so knowing that the first idea may not be the one, right? But just, we recognize the innovation, the commitment that you had, and the detail that you've really given to this project. And we were like, whether this is the idea that he moves forward with, or it's a different one, we wanted to be sure to just invest in you as an up-and-coming entrepreneur. So I just wanted to say that because I was really proud as a board member to see you up there, and I'm proud to see you tonight, and just to encourage you, like, just keep working, keep going.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Definitely.
Vishnu, do you think you'll study programming? Is that your desire?
Yeah, I'm hoping to study computer science and math in college, just because those are two subjects that always interested me. And hopefully, I can bring the project forward using that knowledge.
Yeah, amazing. My dad is a computer science professor, and I wish I had inherited some of that kind of intelligence. I did not. But as someone who frequents downtown, I cannot wait. Can I have the first, like, app? Is there a way for us to have immediate access to it? I have a sophomore at City right now, too, and actually, I know this week, they have their expo for these personal projects that you've heard about. So board members, you can come on down and see all the brilliance at City that sophomore year. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I have a quick question, sorry. So are you planning on selling it, or are you just planning on making it your own thing and continuing on, trying to make it bigger?
Yeah. So currently, I have the technology. I guess what we're looking at is the business model, right? I know this technology can be applied, you know, in parking ramps. We're currently using the grant we got from Stark Garden for the Five by Five Night Pitch Competition to also work on a camera solution that can help make this more reliable and focus on on-street parking. We haven't come up with an exact way, but the idea basically is to sell this to parking businesses directly and have it be a service for all people who want to basically park on the ramp. And hopefully, I can save drivers' time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm wondering, does it tell the driver when he or she comes into the parking lot what spot is open?
Yeah. So the way the app works is you open it up based on your location. It shows you where the nearest open parking spot is. And let's say you're planning to go to Van Andel Arena, for example. Then you can type in the address, and it shows you parking spots that are open nearby, basically.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kind of looks like SpongeBob.
Yeah.
Rubik's Cube.
So before we conclude, we would like to acknowledge Vishnu's parents and his siblings, which is in the audience with us tonight. So that concludes our celebration, but we might see this guy on Shark Tank one day.
Thank you.
Wow, that's amazing.
Wow. From one grade student to two other grade students. Mr. Ms. Calderon, Mr. Chisholm, report of scholar representatives to the board. Either one of you choose to go first?
Um, yes. So we have quite a bit that I guess has happened the last several weeks. Last Wednesday, we had our meeting with the Superintendent Scholar Advisory Group, and we covered kind of a host of things. We began with kind of a debrief of the legislative luncheon that we had, that we had several weeks ago now, just kind of getting to talk through that with the group and go over some things, and then also discuss some further opportunities and kind of looking forward as to what we might be able to do with, you know, continuing to connect with legislature on issues of education and matters of that involving student voice and further opportunities in that department. And then also, we were able to kind of split up into groups and discuss matters of perhaps organizing some sort of social-emotional wellness day for the district sometime in the next month or two. And then, as Jackie will tell you more about, also talking about a school cleanup event. And so kind of organizing ideas and discussing how we would go about that for both of those things. And then really just making sure that that's something that's representative of the student need as well. So we were able to talk about that. Several weeks ago, we had our senior summit, which was just an opportunity for seniors across the district, of course, virtually this year, to kind of organize in groups and have these sort of, you know, lectures and discussions and kind of interactions with a variety of different topics. So college scholarship opportunity, you know, athletic opportunity in colleges, and you know, kind of like a host of things like that. So that was, you know, a nice opportunity for a lot of the seniors in the district as well. And then this week, I know personally, I had my first district strategic planning update, kind of individual group meeting led by Dee Hollowell. So that was kind of an opportunity in order to discuss more so the specifics and to continue to give feedback on a lot of that as we kind of go forward in implementing that planning. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Like Luca was mentioning, we did our meeting last Wednesday? Last Wednesday? I forget what we were on, last Wednesday. And so he was in the social-emotional learning group, and I was with the cleanup group. And we're trying to organize at least four cleanups throughout the end of the school year, at least once a month, to where we can help clean up. I know that we have one for certain that we want to do in celebration of Earth Day, where we want to go outside and clean up. We do know that a lot of elementary and middle schools do that, but it's not seen a lot in middle, in high school. So we do want to do that, where we go outside and clean up the grounds after the snow has melted, and it helps clean up, and it helps with the workload for the workers. And we want to do some cleanups for indoor buildings as well. We are planning on, you know, just reorganizing classrooms, having vacuums done. We do not plan on using any chemical supplies that will be left for the custodial. But it's just so that we can help out and kids have like that sense of like companionship and where we can feel in a clean classroom, because I feel like a lot of students are having trouble with that this year. And I do know that a lot of scholarships are opening and closing doors soon, so I know that a lot of seniors are hurrying it up and doing those essays, filling out those questionnaires. And so it's something that a lot of people are focusing on right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for your leadership. Moving on, any public comment? Do we have any public comment cards? Do we have any union representatives in the audience who wants to speak, and being none? Okay, thank you. Next up then, reports. Secretary's report.
Alright. I have a few announcements for upcoming committee meetings. The first one is the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee. They will be meeting on Wednesday, March 16th, at 4:00 PM in the Franklin Campus Administration Building Auditorium. Policy Committee meets on Wednesday, March 16th, as well, at 5:00 PM, also at Franklin Campus in Room 101. Legislative Committee will meet on Monday, March 21st, at 5:00 PM in the auditorium.
Great. Thank you. Let's move to committee chair updates. Ms. Davis, can we start with the Academic Achievement Committee?
Yes, I can. We had a meeting last Wednesday. We had our Instructional Council update, as we do each month. And there is a history, AP World History course being proposed at Union, which will be available for sophomores and up. We also had a presentation on tiered intervention and extension supports, and just kind of got an overview of what Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three are. Tier One being for every student. It's the designated curriculum, and 80% of those of our students have their needs met through Tier One. Tier Two is more small-group focused. It's based on data. And we were given a list of all the different Tier Two supports that we have in our district, and which buildings have the opportunity to use those supports. Tier Three is intensive individualized intervention. We had a lot of questions, and we'll still be digging deep into all of that, but it was nice to see what is available in our district and just get an overview. We also had feedback given on how intercession went, which was during our winter break. It was a brand-new initiative. There were 12 teachers involved in that and 125 scholars. So far, we've gotten feedback from our teachers, and they, they spoke of what worked well. I just made a couple notes. Scholars were grouped by school because, and what the teachers liked about that was that they could talk to the student's actual teacher and find out what their needs were. They also got to know new scholars that were in their building that they don't work with every day. Teachers really liked IXL, which was a program that they used because it was targeted, flexible, and differentiated. They liked the SEL lessons. Each day incorporated some social-emotional learning. Some of the things that they thought would make it better in the future were having a mental health professional available, figuring out what's best for kids as far as iPad versus Chromebook, because it was different based on the student. Possibly having a different platform for younger scholars. And some of them voiced that maybe it would be better if it was grouped by grade level instead of school. So just some information to look at as we move forward. They are, our district is also getting feedback from parents and students as well. A survey went out, I believe, like, the day or two before our meeting. So we're waiting on that. And then we ended our meeting just kind of talking about what we want the format of the academic achievement meetings to look like this year. And we're looking at, we have the Instructional Council update every month, but we're looking at also having an ESR fund update as it relates to academics and a strategic plan update as it relates to academics, having those be a running format for our agenda, and then having one big topic in the area of academics. So that's about it right now. We're looking at getting a presentation on graduation rates and return to learn in the near future.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Davis? Okay, Ms. Shaki, the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee report.
Thank you, President Ross. Yeah, the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee met for the very first time just a few weeks ago. And if I could, if I think of two themes for this committee, I think of stewardship and innovation. How can we, as a school district, be great stewards of the facilities and the property we own for the benefit of our scholars and community? But also, what can we do to think with innovation around how we utilize our facilities, how we create exceptional spaces for our scholars to learn, and how we can be an asset to the community at large through the use of facilities? So in order to do that, we just needed to start by listening and receiving reports and getting a reminder of kind of who we are from the built environment. So we received an overview from Mr. Johnson on all of the buildings we own, their acreage, their property, some of the history. We've asked for even more information about the age of buildings and some other details as well, so we'll get that in our next meeting. We also looked at current policies, Board of Ed policies, that relate to the use of facilities. We've referred some of those that haven't been looked at since mid-2000s to the Policy Committee for a review and a refresh. And so policy, that'll be coming to you in the future. And because we're a new committee, we just decided on our meeting schedule, and we're also preparing to submit a recommendation to President Ross and Dr. Roby on content for the May Board Retreat, which will have a facilities focus. So a good first meeting.
Thank you. And I guess you are still up with the finance.
I'm still up for finance as well, yes. Yeah, a great, full finance meeting. Again, lots going on with ESR funds and state budgets and bond projects. So I will call your attention to a couple of items on the purchasing agenda today, a couple of really great items. So one is that we are forming a partnership with GVSU for ESL endorsements for our teachers. So really excited about this new program that will enhance some of our educators in receiving their ESL endorsement. You'll note some equipment purchases on the purchasing agenda as well. As we all know, in the supply chain right now, there are long lead times, so we're making some advanced purchases on equipment that we'll need here in the oncoming year. And then a pretty significant technology purchase. We are going to be equipping 744 classrooms with new technology. That is really exciting and an incredible benefit for our scholars. We're going to receive a report today on the Building Champions Campaign, so I will await for that. But certainly, it is our recommendation that we approve the request to use some ESR funds to help support our athletics campaigns for both of our high school programs. And then, good news, our ESR III application went into the Michigan Department of Education. That was approved. Our first round is $49 million that has been approved. Exceptional news for us. After spring break, we'll submit the second part of that application, which is another $25 million request. So really great news for Grand Rapids Public Schools. That's my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Shaki, on either of those?
I do have a question, actually, and it's in relation to really both the Finance and Academic Achievement Committees. So with these ESR dollars, I know that we had a sort of a decently rigid plan going into kind of our application for ESR III, and then also with the ESR I and II dollars, with what exactly we were allocating this funding for over the course of several years. Is that a plan that is malleable to a degree, that can fit the needs of, I guess, students, but then also staff and grounds and whatnot and building needs? Because I know that that's something where, you know, student needs and staff needs, and the needs of the district are something that kind of change a lot. And I'm speaking in terms directly of academic achievement, especially with, I guess, COVID. That's something where we've seen the needs of students kind of change kind of on moment's notice sometimes. So is that something where we can kind of change how we're allocating that money in order to meet those variable needs?
Luca, that's a great question. And so to answer it very simply, yes. With our ESR I dollars, which were allocated in 2020, 2021, most of that went for like HVAC and kind of like as we were at the beginning of the COVID, it was specifically around pandemic-related expenses, expenses, excuse me. ESR II and ESR III have been more about ongoing and recovery needs. With the ESR III dollars, which do not expire until September of 2024. Mr. Oberst, around?
June 2020.
June 2024, although there's advocacy to try to push that back, right, to 2026?
Yeah, pushing, because we have discovered, as we have created plans, to your point, the needs of our students and our schools have evolved and changed, and it is flexible. And then also, as everybody has been aware, we have some shortages with supply chain issues, and that's one of the reasons why we're pushing for some of those, to continue to work towards getting resources and supports within our schools and specifically for our students, but also being mindful of the things that we don't necessarily have control over. And so that's why we've been doing some advocacy at the federal level and also with our local state elected officials around making sure that they do understand the plight of schools. And I know that the two of you, as well as the other members of the Superintendent's Council eloquently spoke around some of the needs that are happening kind of right now. And so each month, we do kind of do a review. And then I know that our team is responsible for providing an overview to the broader community and then making some adjustments around the needs that, as time changes. So to answer your question, yes, it is flexible.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess we'll move on with the Superintendent's Report.
Alright. So, good evening again. And so what I so appreciate about our student leaders is that they really are just the poise and the advocacy and the things that they, they understand about the needs that they have, and then also the advocacy for their colleagues. And both Luca and Jackie kind of spoke about some of the work that we are doing. May is Mental Health Month, and so we have some plans around what's going to take place at the secondary level, specifically around mental wellness at our high schools and also our middle schools. For the month of May, it's just about doing some additional planning with the young scholars and their building leadership to make sure that it's able to kind of see it to fruition. They talked about the cleanup days, and we'll, once we firm up some calendar days, we'll make sure that we share that with all of you as well. And there'll be beautification days, things kind of, you know, at the end of winter into spring, you want to kind of do some things to kind of spruce up buildings. But then also, we're talking about things that we can do inside of buildings as well. Our GRPS group also has been looking at school uniforms and food and nutrition and having some conversations with those leaders who make some decisions. And so more information around that is to come. I want to also give a, just a reminder and a shout-out to our GRPSF leader, Ms. Stephanie Adams. Adams, as she led the treats for our district-wide staff this past Friday. They were well received, lots of goodies across all of our schools and had an opportunity to just thank people, and we so appreciate that. And also, all of our staff is getting GRPS polo swag, and so that's another way to show school pride and district pride, so we're excited about that as well. So a lot of positive things that are coming forward. March is Women's History Month as well as Reading Month, and Mr. Eric Harmson is going to come forward and kind of talk about some March activities that are planned. And then also, there will be an invitation for board members and others who would like to read to our scholars to do so during the month of March.
Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Roby, and distinguished board members. I am here to share with you just a brief overview of some activities our scholars are doing around March's Reading Month. It's a really fun, it's always fun to be in buildings, but it's especially fun during March's Reading Month. So some of the scholar and school themes are around really creative ideas that our buildings have done. We have Olympic theme at one building. Of course, we have Dr. Seuss, that's at Mulook Park, so those are two of my favorite things, Dr. Seuss and my old stomping grounds, Mulook Park Elementary School. We have March Bracket Reading Madness at one of our schools. We have Drop Everything and Read. We have several activities at our scholar, at our school buildings that are just really fun. And you'll notice there's a lot of, a lot of it is around, one school is doing, read 100 books or 100 chapters, depending on what grade level. So some really exciting ways to get our scholars excited and motivated to read. There's some other things. We have community and central office mystery and guest reader. So mystery readers are in the morning. The intercom, somebody will read and the scholars are able to guess who that is. We have many central office and then community members who come out and read. We had Representative Posthumus last week, I believe, at Buchanan reading to our scholars. We have elementary scholars reading to preschool scholars, middle school scholars reading to elementary scholars, door decorating contest, book giveaways, 100 books or 100, I said, Olympic reading events on Fridays. White Cats mascot Crash comes in and reads and then does some other motivating things. Of course, we're doing the One Book One City March event, which we had a presentation at the last board meeting. And then our curriculum department is helping coordinate guest readers and books. And I'll just leave you with an invitation. If you are able and willing to read, please let Julie Anderson know and she will help coordinate you into one building or several buildings. And it is, as somebody who regularly reads, it's a, it's a fun time.
Excellent.
And we will also, if you would desire to do so, if you would like to have books supplied, we can certainly do that as well, because I know sometimes you may not always have books that you feel like are appropriate to take to schools.
Excellent.
The next part of the report, I am going to ask Mr. Larry Johnson and Mr. Alex Smart to come forward. We are so excited for Mr. Alex Smart to be joining our team, and we wanted to do our official introduction of who he is and give you an opportunity just to formally meet him. Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Roby, and the distinguished board members, as well as our student reps. Tonight, it gives us great pleasure to introduce to some, reintroduce to others, Mr. David Alex Smart. Mr. Smart is no stranger to the Grand Rapids Public Schools, have spent many years here with us as a design supervisor, design, design and construction supervisor. He then left us and went away to Kendall College as their executive director of facilities. And then from there, he went on to the Tennessee State University. We were very fortunate enough in our, in our nation, national recruiting effort to hire an executive director of facilities in operation, that Mr. Smart showed some interest. And we were, we're very happy to have him back on board. He is very knowledgeable about the facilities here in Grand Rapids, played a very important role, a significant role in our bond issue many years ago. But more importantly, as we go into one of the most significant renovation projects probably in the history of the district, and that's the renovation of Central High School, COI, Mr. Smart has intimate details and intimate knowledge of that building. So his architectural design background will be of great vast knowledge to us. So I'm going to shut up, give Mr. Alex Smart, David Alex Smart, an opportunity to say a few words, and we're happy to have him on board.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for this opportunity. Excuse me, like Mr. Johnson said, I was with the district for a long time. I was here for about 12 years. I had the pleasure of working with David Smith and then later on, Kent Plum Parents. I learned a lot from both of them. And after gaining a few more years of experience in other institutions, I am super excited to be back and looking forward to contributing to the team and achieving great things together.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome back. Thank you.
And this is day five for Mr. Smart?
It is, day five. And it's a little confusing because my first name is David, but all my life, everyone has known me by Alex, so we had to change my email to rectify that confusion.
Thank you very much. Welcome back. Great to have you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my reports.
Thank you. So we'll move on to our action items. The purchasing agenda is first up. I don't think we need any background. Do we have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
So moved.
Support. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker's, excuse Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And we also have an addendum to our purchasing agenda that was in your packet. I have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda addendum.
So moved.
Support. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker's, excuse Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And you may recall conversations about repurposing some of the bond funds. There's a description of that on your desk as well. Just to recap and remind folks, you know, we hit some financial snags on the renovation of Innovation Central and some of those bond dollars that were previously identified for other buildings, we're going to repurpose those to complete the Innovation Central project. And again, description of that is on your desk there, and we have had some conversation about it. So can I have a motion to approve the repurposing of those bond funds?
Motion for approval.
Support. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker's, excuse Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And our GRPS Building Champions Campaign update. Does anyone need any information on that? There was a budget in our packet. If I do not, do I have a motion to approve the, that update?
So moved.
Support. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker's, excuse Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And our last action item is an amendment to temporarily amend the GRPS graduate credit requirements. Just quickly, you probably saw it in your packet as well. Obviously, GRPS, we, our credit requirements exceed the minimum set by the state. And just in relation to all things COVID this year, we are looking to amend that to match the states as opposed to our typical credit requirement that does exceed the state requirement. So we just need a motion to approve that for this year. If, if I could have one, or if anyone have any questions or comments?
So moved.
Support.
I would like to make a comment, if I may.
Do you mind after we take the vote? Because we do have the motion on the floor.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker's, excuse Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And Ms. Lewis, you had a comment?
Yes, I do. A comment. I know we passed this last year, and I, I know that there was some controversy posted on the internet that we are dropping our standards and what's wrong with Grand Rapids Public Schools, that we don't care anymore about holding our kids to high standards. And I, I want to respond before anybody gets a chance to even say anything because I think that people who complain about that must have to spend some time with these kids, especially high school kids, who they went to school one day in March and that was it. And they didn't go back to school for a year and a half before they really saw their friends. And I don't think that a lot of people really understand what it means to be in high school and have everything that we think of as high school, proms and, you know, homecomings and, you know, all, even graduations, just snatched away from them. And what it might do to these kids as far as their social and emotional health is concerned. And so I am so glad that we are doing this because these kids have had, not all of them, obviously, some of them did well, and I'm, I'm proud of them, but there are other kids who struggle. And I'm very happy that we are doing this for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I guess to that, I will underscore that again, this is a temporary reduction. Obviously, we're all expecting to sort of be in a state of normalcy in air quotes, you know, for this coming school year, and we want to anticipate maintaining our typical standards as outlined in the board policy for the graduating class of 2023. But thank you very much for, for those comments in regards to this current class, though. And then finally, our consent agenda grouping. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker's, excuse Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. Okay, and the only announcement I have in regards to, just to remind folks, we did solidify a date for our board retreat, May 3rd. The agenda has not fully set, but it will, as Ms. Shaki alluded to in her committee report, it will lean heavily on our facilities planning and in relation to our strategic plan efforts as well. So again, just May 3rd, the appointment has not yet been set, but look for that on your calendars. And aside that, I don't have any other particular announcements. Do we have any public comment cards for non-agenda items? Oh, there being none, okay. Superintendent comments?
None.
None. Ms. Calderon, do you have any closing comments this evening? Oh, we do have a public comment?
Is there?
Oh, we didn't have a card.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, just, just have a seat. She'll bring your card, though.
Oh, excellent.
But you can still have a seat, though. And we'll just, yeah, we'll just ask that you.
I'll be through this, I really appreciate it.
Oh, no. So I guess in lieu of a card at this point, do you just mind stating your name?
Yeah, David Hazel Schwerd. It's a doozy. I can spell it for you.
That is a lot.
It's over now. It's over.
Thank you.
And just, just briefly, just so you know the way that public comment happens, you do have three minutes to make public comment. And as a board, we're not able to respond, but we are listening and taking notes.
Oh, thank you.
And if there's a need to follow up, we'll make sure that administration does that.
Oh, excellent. Thank you very much.
You can feel free to start.
All right. It was more of a question, so I, it may not be, it may not be good for the venue, but my wife and I were very concerned that the county kind of gave you guys the impetus to remove the mask mandate from inside the school and was just, we were wondering, I did inquire through GR Montessori on college whether or not, or what kind of plan was if there was an outbreak, but they weren't able to get back to me yet. So I was kind of concerned about that, like what the plan was and all that jazz. So I know the topic is fraught and all that, but I just wanted to, to see. So thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely, and we'll make sure that someone follows up with you.
Oh, great, thanks. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Even before you leave. Oh, excellent. Appreciate that very much, yeah.
Paul John.
Back to.
Yeah, I will, definitely.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Grant. Ms. Calderon, do you have any closing comments? No?
Oh, yeah, I guess it was just regarding that, everybody was, I don't know if it was more astonishment or excitement or surprise or fear, but the mask mandate was lifted. And I guess it was different seeing people without their masks. And so many people still do wear their masks. It's all, everybody's according comfort. So it definitely is something where I can see that people do care about their health, and if they want to go up to the point where they can still wear their masks, they do. And so people feel comfortable with that, and it's definitely something, something different to see around school.
Thank you. Mrs. Chisel?
Yeah, actually, I wanted to make a comment kind of following up on what Ms. Lewis was saying in regards to the amendment, the temporary amendment to the graduation requirement for the district. And I just want to echo a lot of what she was saying in regards to the fact that I think, although I understand a concern over a change in the curriculum, a sudden one, that in regards to this fear of lowering some sort of educational standard, I think it's very easy to make that assessment and make that claim from an outside-looking perspective, you know, in regards to the state of, you know, our education system on a local state and then also national and even international level. I guess, being a student at City, a discussion around amendments to the curriculum and curriculum requirements through the IB program has been a conversation that we've been having very consistently for the last two years. And that has always just seemed to be a very logical decision on my end, as, as a sort of resolution to a lot of what students are going through or more aptly not going through as, you know, the pandemic has put immense strain on the amount of time and also the quality of education that, that students have been receiving for, for, for two years at this point. And so I think that, you know, as administrators and as people who are here to work in the best interests of students, you know, it's, it's, it's necessary for us to make amendments to what we are expecting out of our students when we've effectively spent, you know, at least a year away from true proper material and curriculum in a classroom. And I think that, you know, even as concerned parents, we just have to understand the dilemma that a lot of our students are in. And I think that that is a very wise decision. And I, I really do support the fact of just being considerate for the position that a lot of students are in because of that and something that they have no control over whatsoever.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisel. Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, just, you know, really want to highlight that, especially when we gave our, our, our teachers and our faculty an appreciation. And I can tell you, they are worn out. It, it's been tough, double duty. I mean, they've really pulled themselves up and worked really hard on behalf of our students. So I really appreciate that, both of our teachers and parents and, and in our administration, the leadership in each of our schools. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
I just echo what Mr. Mathias said.
Roger. Ms. Grant?
No comment.
Ms. Davis?
I just, I had a snow day. Cedar Springs had a snow day when we didn't.
I just, I had a snow day, Cedar Springs had a snow day, when we didn't here in Grand Rapids, and I was able to attend my own students' Black History Month Assembly at their school because of that, and it's the first time I was able to do that. And just want to say that our teachers just did a wonderful job highlighting, it almost told a story throughout the assembly along with the music. So there was a narrator, and kids came up and had speaking parts, and it was just a pleasure to go see that that's being incorporated into our buildings and different projects the kids are doing as well outside of the assembly, where they can highlight someone that is amazing, that happens to be black in our history, and it was just wonderful to see my kids at home working on those projects. So just wanted to pull that out.
Thank you. Dr. Flores?
Yeah, just to share my excitement over the amount of student voice that I'm hearing and the exemplary intelligence that is being demonstrated by our students, having developed apps and contributing to our, to our reduction of stress. And I was downtown the other night, and, oh, it was terrible. I couldn't find a parking place, so I left. But I could see that really reducing stress. So congratulations and keep it up.
Thank you. Ms. Shaqey?
Well, I was going to say what Dr. Flores said, so well said, Dr. Flores, really grateful to have student voice. Thank you.
Please.
Same thing, but I will say, Mr. Chisholm and Ms. Calderon, please continue to advocate for your fellow scholars. They may not often come to see us, but we do believe that you all are giving us a true representation of how the scholars feel, and we appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. I don't think I can really add anything else. You know, our students, again, the representation is impressive, to say the least. Thank you, Ms. Adams and Public Schools Foundation, for your shout out and support of our hardworking folks last week. And I guess really on that, this meeting is adjourned.